All right. Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the planning board, valued community representatives, I welcome you all to this evening's Assembly of the Saco Planning Board. As Chairman, it is my privilege to convene this gathering dedicated to the thoughtful planning and development of our community. Today, we come together with a shared commitment to shaping the future of our city in a manner that reflects our values, respects our heritage, and fulfills the needs of our residents both now and in the future. As we engage in our deliberations, let us remember the profound impact these decisions will have on lives of all, keeping in mind we're residents like you. As it is our duty to maintain transparency, fairness, and inclusivity in our proceedings, ensuring that voices of all are heard and respected. Together, we must embrace the responsibility entrusted to us by our community, working diligently and thoughtfully to chart a course that fosters growth, prosperity, and harmony. And with that, I would like to call this meeting of the Tuesday, May 6, 2025, Saco Planning Board to order. I look forward to the productive discussions and meaningful outcomes that lie ahead. Thank you. With us this evening, we have myself, Matt Provencilo, Chair of the Planning Board, to my left, our Vice Chair, Joyce Larry Clark, and to her left, Planning Board Member Jeff Broshu, and to my right, Carolyn Lane and Jim Moyer, along with our city staff, Emily Cole Prescott, and our Planning Compliance Manager, Lisa Harmon. Emily, do we have a worship item this evening? I see it on our agenda, but I don't see any notes or anything on that.
No, we don't. Thanks for asking.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, our, sorry, excuse me, our Board Members, Camille White and Matt DiCiani are not with us this evening. Our City Council Liaison, Phil Patch, is absent as well.
Mr. Chair, can you just let me know who's excused and who's unexcused?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Camille is excused this evening. Matt DiCiani is not, unfortunately. With that, our next item on our agenda, item number five, is our approval of our April 15th, 2025 Meeting Minutes. And we have a draft of those minutes for our review. Board Members, any questions, comments, or edits?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the draft Meeting Minutes for the April 15th, 2025 meeting as presented.
I will second.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce, and the second, Jeff. Any additional comments or edits? All right, with that, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Abstain, who's absent.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. All right, our next item on our agenda this evening is our public comment period. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to come before the board and ask any questions, provide any comments, and we will collect those and address them as necessary and appropriately. So if anyone would like to come to the board or come to the podium, please feel free. All right, seeing no participation this evening, we will continue. Our next item is our Planning Board Public Hearing Guidelines. This is a document published both electronically and hard copy. There are print versions at the rear of the auditorium this evening, if anyone would like a copy of those. If anyone has any questions, please reach out and let us know, and we will do our best to answer those questions. And with that, we'll move to our applications for review and public hearings this evening. Our first item being 8A, this is Waterfall Drive, and this is a residential development. This is map 63, Lot 6. And this is a proposal for 195 residential dwelling units with associated site improvements. And this is within the Park North Development Contract Zone. This is presented by Park North Development and Sebago Technics. Again, a public hearing and continued application review this evening for preliminary subdivision and site plan review. Emily, any additional questions or comments?
This is really an update tonight for the team to share where they're at. I did want to just point out in the after-the-fact packet, we received correspondence from Bernstein Sure regarding the Park North Contract Zone, as was requested of me at the last meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Emily. And sorry, real quick, Board Members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item? No? Great. Any questions for Emily at this time before we move to the applicant? Jeff?
I guess I just wanted to be clear. I read that response from Bernstein Sure. So that was something that we asked, and Emily reached out, and we got basically an additional legal opinion about where we're standing with the current state of the contract zones and how to move forward. Mr. Chair, do we need to kind of discuss that as a board, because we have three applicants before us tonight that are all, would all be affected by that? And I, I guess I'd like to know how some of the other Board Members feel, if it's, if we feel like we're clear to proceed with these applications, or if there is possibly some legal implications for the city if we do.
Sure. Emily, is it, is it possible, as I'm reading through this, I'm just getting to this now myself, would it be possible to give a brief summary of this, of this memo?
Yes, this memo, what I did was I shared the information from Jim Katsifakis, who wrote the original legal opinion, so we're using the same framework for every question regarding the contract zone project. And this memo says that if the Planning Board concurs with staff's determination, which staff's analysis has determined that this falls under, remember the buckets I went over on the PowerPoint presentation? There's a substantial construction met bucket, a legally non-conforming completed slash completed bucket, and then there's just a null and void bucket. And I said, maybe those titles might change, but we categorized all the contract zones. Does that all ring a bell? And the Park North Cascade and Cascade Contract Zones were going to be in the substantial construction met bucket. And so based on Jim Katsifakis's framework, I had Bernstein Sure look at this question specifically. They've given us legal opinions before. Phil Saucer is usually the one that you see on the correspondence. So if the Planning Board concurs with what staff has determined, the Planning Board may proceed to evaluate the applications listed above based on the standards contained in the Park North Contract Zone Agreement that was in effect at the time of the 2021 zoning ordinance repeal. That is, in a nutshell, the takeaway.
Okay.
Right, and I guess, Mr. Chair, if I may, just, one of the things I know Emily had mentioned was, I believe it was you, and it might have been Jim Katsifakis as well, that substantial completion in the contract zone as a whole, not on any particular lot, and the construction of the roads, for example, and drainage systems certainly constitute substantial work in this project.
Yep, that's, we took the definition of substantial construction from the ordinance, which I coordinated with Jim Katsifakis when this question came up. And that's what we analyzed it based off of.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, so that was kind of, I was hoping that you guys might weigh in with your background. I know we're not asking you for a legal opinion, but, you know, I guess I was just having a hard time in my mind breaking it down, where we have, you know, three different applications, two of them being lots that were purchased, so obviously they're vacant, and if it were to be challenged that those weren't part of the substantial construction, they were just kind of a, an image, a map, a proposed area, and drafted, and the contract zone was built. And that was some of my questions about if they were to fall into, or to meet the underlying or current zoning, right? The setbacks and density and coverage, to me, there'd be no problem, right? They bought a lot, it still meets what we have in place today, no questions asked. The other applicant, you know, is also the major developer, and that one brings a little bit more insight, right? They've invested now, for by your definition, the roadway, the infrastructure's all been in place and being built out in phases. That kind of made sense to me, and I think that would be the one that would be more difficult to, you know, to argue, because they're probably using some more density bonuses for the contract zone with the number of units that were fitting in there, but it's also kind of the same entity that has substantial construction. So it's just, I wanted to make sure that we weren't going down a path that might, you know, be challenged for the city. And two of them seem pretty straightforward, because even if they, if they met the underlying zoning that's currently in place today, that would be an easy approval. It was just the other one, and I'm seeing some nods from other Board Members. It sounds like we're all feeling like, you know, the larger application before us would meet substantial construction, even though it wasn't detailed. And that was what was hard for me, is I think of kind of a site plan for one lot, knowing that it might be phased, but we kind of knew what was going to go in for each piece. This being a much larger project, I didn't know how it would be viewed, and I'm feeling like a lot of my peers here are feeling like this is all part of the contract zone, substantial construction's been started, we're just getting more of the details of what's going to take place in the build-out.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is a really good question, and I love zoning questions. Like, we could spend the whole night talking about this, honestly, Jeff. But we were viewing it as all of the projects were in the original subdivision plan, so the whole subdivision has met substantial construction, or substantial construction is the term. So we were viewing it as those lots had been created formally, and they were in the subdivision plan approval, and they actually are using the contract, not for density or anything, but for some of the layout, they are reliant on the contract provisions. So I hope that helps, and if we want to have more detail on this, be happy to talk about zoning. We will be talking about zoning ordinance amendments coming up, so there will be plenty of zoning to talk about in the future.
No, this was great. Thank you, Emily. Jim?
Just to put it on the record, I think that the five points that Jim Katsifakis mentioned as a guideline to determine whether or not, you know, substantial construction, you know, if there are vested rights in substantial construction, I mean, I'm very comfortable with both the Eastview Parkway projects as well as Waterfall Drive. I mean, I think they've all met that substantial construction standard, they all have vested rights, and so I feel comfortable with these contract zones.
Thank you, Jim. Jeff?
So I guess, just for more clarification, right? So as we look forward, because this is going to pop up for the remaining undeveloped parcels, when you say substantial construction, it's because you're viewing it all as like a master plan, that those lots were there, and these individuals have bought and maybe are sitting on vacant lots, or maybe buying lots in the future, they're still going to buy those vested rights that the developer invested into the infrastructure to get the roadway there. That's how, that's your view on it?
Yes, and I mean, I think it's very similar to, if there was a subdivision approved and construction started on it, you know, the roadway was developed, there are, you know, 50 lots that would be developed there. And in the middle of that development, you know, after the roads all constructed and everything, the subdivision standards changed dramatically in the city, so that that subdivision would no longer be allowed. I think that developer would have vested rights in completing that subdivision, even though perhaps the individual lots didn't meet the new subdivision standards. I think it's, it's the same concept. So I, that's why I feel these contract zones are okay.
Great. Good discussion. Thank you. I think when the, if there's a scenario where we see some amendments to any of the property lines, that we might have a different discussion then, or continue this discussion. But I think for where we're at right now, I agree with everything said so far.
Could I clarify that one comment?
Sure.
When you say, because Emily and I have had that conversation many, many times, lot lines is okay if you change them. Parcel lines, which are areas in the overall plan, which I think we have four, four in each zone, I think it is, four parcels. And those parcels all have different rights, setbacks, uses. If I tried to change a parcel line, that would be considered an amendment to the contract zone, which in Emily's opinion, would most likely never be allowed by the council, as we stand today. Second, I guess I want to go on the record and make it clear that this is a subject the council is discussing and reviewing. Nothing's been done. No contract zones, unless I'm incorrect, have been changed, deleted, taken away. Nothing's happened. They may or may not, maybe a few weeks, maybe a few months, maybe next year. Until somebody decided to try to take my contract zone away, my contract zone's in place, no different than any other zone. If I owned an industrial piece, and I was before you to put up an industrial building, but the council was thinking about changing that zone to a residential zone, would you tell me to go away, or would you allow me to proceed until that zone change happened? And how long would you put me aside? A week, a month, a year, 10 years? Until we sat here and waited for the council to make some decision, if they're going to do anything, and how that decision is going to affect my particular two contract zones? In this case, and I don't want to speak for Emily, but it, my impression of what she has said is that her and the planning staff has made the determination that three contract zones in the city have met substantial construction. Two of them happen to be mine. I don't even know who the third one is. Which basically says, even if the council was to do something, their recommendation to the council would be, out of, I think, 50, 52 contract zones the city has, those three are safe. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why the conversation has gone where it has, and obviously I take a different take. And honestly, if the council was to have Emily call me tomorrow and say, we're going to take away your contract zone, we all know where that's going. We all know the next phone call. So, I mean, I would have no choice but to fight that battle. But in our opinion, my attorney's opinion is, we are well beyond vested rights. There is nothing, it cannot just be taken away. So, and that's obviously why we have courts, you have one legal opinion, but we, I'm just, I haven't even read the whole thing, I just got it put in my hands a few minutes ago. I think that, in a different way of saying it, backs up what I think I'm saying, is that our contract zone's in place, we're safe, and there's no legal reason why this board shouldn't proceed with any project out there, as long as everything else is.
Yeah.
Or not, not review us because of that one reason.
Yeah, no, I think we're in agreement. I think there is that one, that one element of document that came before the board, that since the zoning had been amended, that that wipes everything, and that's what sort of spurred all the conversation.
Yes.
But, yeah, I think we, we're in agreement with staff and where we're at right now today. The, the only thought on that final comment is, if there's amendment that comes, I have no, we have 14 or so amendments to the, to the whole subdivision in that area.
Well, amendments to the plan, but not an amendment to the contract zone. There's only been, I think, one or two amendments to the actual zone.
Correct.
And, and with the help of Emily, over the last few years, we have worked very hard into clarifying, is an amendment to the plan actually an amendment to the contract zone? And her and I have finally reached an agreement that they are completely separate. If I take what, what's before you tonight, and I take that large, one singular piece and carve it up into 190, 100, whatever, however many lots we have, carve it up, that's okay. But if I went back and tried to take the parcel that makes up the overall piece and change the boundaries or the use or something like that, she's made it pretty clear that that's probably never going to happen.
Correct, and that's sort of what I was alluding to, is that anything that comes before us, just to make sure that we're, we're within those confines still, and we seem to have been.
Yes, and believe me, we have zero intention of changing any parcel lines from here to the end of the.
Yeah, that was, that was the only thought to the comment there, is just to make sure, just to triple, quadruple check, so.
I think you were talking about parcel with a capital P, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. All right, so with that, our, our update from you or proposal here on, on the application?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Elliot Chamberlain, owner of Park North Development. As we talked about now, a few months ago, I think, we talked about the way we wanted to proceed was, deal with the engineering outside of this board and bring any amendments back, not amendments, any changes back to the plan that were non-engineering. So tonight, we have made a few changes. To start off with, we've gone from what was 195 units, we've dropped that down to, at this point, 189. We've deleted two individual house lots, we've deleted two duplex condos for a total of four units, to bring us down to that 189. We have increased the number of ponds on the property, so we could better make the drainage work better, and for any technical review or questions, I have Matt Ohr with me tonight from Sebago Technics. We have created two more pocket parks besides what I'll call the eyeball shape in the purple color. So we now have a total of three pocket parks on the property. One of those is now going to be a, designed as a mailhouse building with some open space beside it, so that people can pull off the road and have a larger building for mail delivery, package delivery, things of that nature, which we did not do in the first section, and we kind of regret it. So by having that building, it's a much easier mail delivery system, much cleaner, can actually become a gathering place of sort. Two, you see the pocket park in this picture right here, we've had some conversations with both staff, Joe and Emily, and with the water district about, we were kind of bending the norm, if you will. The idea is that pocket park would be part of the public right of way, but we are going to assume responsibility of maintaining it, grass cutting, tree, taking care of trees, shrubs, whatever might be there in the landscaping. We have both a sidewalk that follows the road in that area and a secondary sidewalk that follows the curve of the house lots. So we took, these are alleyway lots, so you basically pull in the alleyway and have a rear entry garage, if you will. So all you see from the street side is the front of the house, which we've done in Dunston quite a bit. One of the questions the board asked us was to take homes that we've done, so these are actually houses that were built in Dunston, and we, you know, put the shape of them so you could see how they fit on these lots and how the driveway might work, to give you a better idea. The dark green around these lots is the setback area, and the yellowish area is obviously everything inside the setbacks and, and how these houses fit, and how close they might be to the street, and, and their driveway to the alleyway. Matt, if you can switch over to where we created the other pocket park? So at, at the one road with the cul-de-sac, and this is actually the only cul-de-sac in the entire neighborhood. neighborhood, you can see the roads come down to a point, and we had, that's where the two duplexes got eliminated. And we just felt they were too tight, too close to each other. So we decided to eliminate those two duplexes and create both a sitting area, pocket park, and this two mail receptacles. So these people will have their own mail receptacle, so it's much closer to where they live. The main one will be for everybody else. And then the apartments will also have their own. So we've kind of broken that up. So not all 189 units are all going to the same location. Overall, the, one of the other things that I think the Conservation Commission, when we walked the site, asked us about trails. So we've added, you can see on here, the blue is new sidewalks, the red are existing sidewalks, the green are existing trails, and the goldish color are new trail sections. So you can see, right where Matt's cursor is, we created another loop, because the land was big enough to have a secondary trail and create a loop system there. We're redirecting right there, where the trailhead came out onto what's going to be the extension of Waterfall Drive, and moved it over so it will blend right into the sidewalk that is at the mailhouse. And then we have a temporary sidewalk, excuse me, trail, right there, down by the tower and coming in the backside of the waterfalls. And we were asked if, by Parks and Rec Director, if we could do that until such time that gets developed. And when it gets developed, we'll form a more permanent, either sidewalk or trail. But he was, he asked us if we'd be willing to create a temporary trail so it can be used much earlier to come in the backside of the falls. Besides that, we've moved a couple of, a few buildings around, pushed them back, created a little bit more space. Overall, those are most of the visual changes, if you will. So if there's any questions in regards to those issues, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If there's any questions about detention ponds or some of the engineering side of it, I'll ask Matt to come up.
Thank you. Board members, any questions at this time? Jeff?
Mr. Chamberlain, I heard you say that one of the two additional pocket parks you'd be creating, you would be maintaining the maintenance, performing all the maintenance for that. Would you be doing that for all three pocket parks, where it wouldn't become, transferred to the city, and have the burden of parks and rec going out to maintain these parks?
That's correct. All of them would be, because of the associations that are currently in place for the first section, this is just an expansion of the number of units within those associations. So this is, it's just enlarging the neighborhood. But the legalities and the abilities of that association will take over and maintain. So two of the pocket parks will be owned and maintained. The, I got to come up with a better name than an eyeball shape, but that one there would be owned by the city but maintained. And Joe did make that clear. When we were going through conversations about that right of way in the shape of it, he did say that we would have to maintain it. And we agreed to that right up front.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts, questions from board members? Jim?
I just want to compliment you, Mr. Chamberlain. I think the changes you've made are very thoughtful, and they're going to actually improve the project a lot. The trails, the pocket parts, the trying to make sure that the buildings aren't too close together, and to give everyone a good experience there. So I'm looking forward to, as you continue to progress with this, seeing what comes next. But I'm impressed with what you've come up with so far.
And I know the typical developer mentality is to max it out, max it out, max it out. This really became clear to us, this was one of those areas where less is more. And obviously, the pocket parks were our idea, but we were really trying to create or eliminate just that long, skinny road, just driving through the woods, if you will, coming out to Cascade Road. So we wanted to create some visual niceties, if you will, going through there, both for people passing through and for the, obviously, the residents that live there. The, we've seen what happened to, at Dunston, when we took a detention, what was a needed detention pond and turned it into a landscape pond. We did the same thing here in the first section, and we saw what that did for, it becomes a gathering area, it becomes a talking point. It actually makes the sales of those units nicer and easier. So we kind of took that same thought process here, and we do. We, thank you for the compliment, but I think we are, I think it is going to add a lot to the neighborhood.
Jeff?
Thank you. Also, I wanted to touch base, one of the engineering memos, there was item 2C, referenced your plans for future connectivity to the rear of 955 Portland Road. Do you have something on this plan that kind of shows what you might be doing to address that concern of the city engineer?
I don't remember that, and I'm not sure what 955 is, off the top of my head. Do you have that? I know years and years ago, actually, I think it was Bob Hamlin, that wanted us to connect from where our new apartments, the 90 units, that's all approved and we're about ready to start, over to what is King Weinstein's property. And we had a number of reasons why that just didn't make sense. And so we never did it. But I don't know of any comment of connecting to any other properties. We don't have any intention right now of connecting to any properties, either by road, trail, or utilities, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chair, it looks like 955 Portland Road is the Pack Edge property, which isn't, isn't part of your development, I don't believe.
Right. We don't, we don't own that land. So thank you for letting me know which piece that is. So by building this road, phase one, as the city has made it very clear, our phase one will actually complete the extension of Waterfall all the way to Cascade Road. So they have come to us before about trying to use it, but didn't want to share in any maintenance. So it was tough to come to any agreement. And at the time, Pack Edge was able to do what they wanted to do for now. So it all worked out. But certainly, when that road gets turned over, it'll be public in those, what really is four parcels, Pack Edge, the cell tower, and then I think it's the son, I can't remember his name, that the father-son own those two parcels. The old car lot, I call it car lot, where they store some old Volvos or Saabs or something. Yeah, Stevenson. So he's going to, he's now going to have two properties, one on the east and west side of Waterfall Drive. So they will end up having access to that public road.
Yeah. I mean, maybe before our next meeting, we could look at that. It looks like it was the January 21st memo from the city engineer, Joe Laverrier. It was item 2 Delta, and it was with regards to sheet C-202, because he did talk about the tower that you mentioned, reworking access.
Yeah. Now, I will tell you, it is, it's extremely difficult to get the water district to allow any stubs into a property, if that's what he's talking about, if you have no idea as to what you're going to build. For example, the two applications behind me tonight on East U-Parkway, none of those lots had a stub. They wouldn't allow me to, because I couldn't tell them exactly what each lot was going to put on, put up for a building, whether it was going to be 2,000 square foot office or a 20,000 square foot warehouse. So each, we were at least able to get the, in that case, the water line on the correct side of the road. So it's right there for them to grab without going into the road. I would highly doubt they would allow anybody to put up, to put in a stub, not knowing whether you need a two-inch line or a 16-inch line into the property.
Yeah.
But certainly, we can, we can work through that with Joe.
Yeah. I mean, I assume, I see what you're saying, Jeff, in the city engineer's January memo. I think, I mean, it says, "Consideration should be given to accommodating future connections to the rare land of 955 Portland Road." I assume it's road connection, not water line or sewer line.
Yeah, we can clarify that with.
Because it's talking about, it's talking about driveways and roadways in the, in the earlier comments.
Could, Mr. Chair, if I may, could we just ask Emily to clarify, that memo from, that's in our packet, the header of it says, "January 21st, 2024," but it looks like the footnote at the bottom that it was saved to your file on 25. I think it was just a typo on the first page. So it is a current January 2025 memo?
It is.
Thank you.
So I think, I think what Joe is saying, if, Matt, Mr. Orr, are you controlling the plan? Oh, it just went away. Emily hijacked it.
He did that on purpose.
I think that in the top-left little key of that section there.
That's the section we're talking about.
Right. I think, I think it's the, that Rochelle Rochelle. I think that's, that's the 995. So it seems like he might be asking about that. We're talking about this place here.
Right. Now it's starting to make sense. I was thinking we were talking about King Weinstein's property, but this makes more sense. If we're talking about a curb cut, I don't have any issue with putting curb cuts. You know, obviously, we can, the owners are around, so we can certainly work with them to find an appropriate location on where to put a curb cut. The only thing I had ever asked the people from Pack Edge was, okay, I don't have a big issue with you coming onto the Waterfall Drive and you get out on the Cascade Road. But I said, I would certainly want to have some maintenance agreement that if you destroy the road, you fix it. And they elected not to move forward with that. But they were able to get done what they needed to get done.
Sure. So I guess let's, back to Jeff's comment, let's just circle back with Joe and just make sure. I'm not sure if a curb cut, that might be a little bit too much, but if there's provisions in there, I'm not sure what he's thinking exactly.
And I think the goal was, tonight was talk, kind of make sure that we were good with all the other items.
Sure.
And then we're going to dive pretty hard into the engineering and working pretty closely with Joe. So the hope is, next time we come back, we've, Joe was writing you something saying, we've addressed all the issues. And we've kind of, you know, crossed the Ts and dotted the Is on everything.
Yeah, that would be great. I think introducing more traffic or turning movements into there, into that road, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily the goal or what we want to do. But, yeah, as far as what you've presented with us tonight, I think it's great. I don't see any, I don't have any, any major comments or anything like that myself. But any other thoughts from board members? Do you have a thought or a timeframe on being able to kind of circle back and catch up on a lot of the engineering components and addressing some of those items?
If I can get Matt to stop working on everybody else's project, maybe we can.
He doesn't have any other projects, I'm sure.
60, 90, 90 days? Yeah, probably 60. 45 to 90, I'll give you a wide range.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanted sort of, your thoughts on how much work needed to still kind of go into it.
Yeah. I mean, we've.
There's a lot to do.
Right now, everything works. So now it's tidying up the loose ends, and then get it to Joe, and make sure he has, you know, adequate time to review.
Sure.
We still got to meet with the water district again. There's one or two items we got to work out with them. We, we had like four items, we're down to one or two. So it's going in a good direction. But yes, just making sure. And we're trying very hard to put an accurate CMP plan, because CMP does not like to draw a plan until after we get approval, which is always fun. We're trying to get them to do it beforehand this time, so it can be accurate for an approved plan. So it's things like that, just really trying to make sure we've covered all the bases.
Jeff?
Mr. Chair, we have it advertised as a public hearing, so I would move to reopen the public hearing for Park North LLC map, map 63, for the 190, 195 proposed dwelling units.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second. Jim, those in favor of reopening the public hearing for Waterfall Drive, map 63, lot 6. Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. If anyone is with us this evening that would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And we will collect comments and address them as appropriately at the conclusion.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I move to continue the public hearing to the next hearing date that this matter is being heard.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce, and the second. Carrie Lynn? Emily, do we have a particular date that we would like to formally schedule this? Or would we like to leave it a bit open-ended and we'll renotice? It seems like we might have some time and renoticing might not be an issue, but.
I prefer to have a date that everyone can agree to, so we can plan it out. You said 60 days, I think? I can pull up your schedule for the year, and we can pick a date.
That would be great. That might be mid-July, I suspect.
So are you thinking July 15th?
Yeah, why don't we do July 15th? That works for applicant. Any additional thoughts from board members? All right. Those in favor of continuing the public hearing to July 15th? Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Any additional thoughts or questions for the applicant? I think overall, these adjustments are pretty good. 195 down to 189, some more parks, mailrooms, trails, sidewalks. It's all good. All right. With that, we get a motion to continue the application to July 15th, we said.
Mr. Chair, I'll so move.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second. Joyce, any additional discussion on continuing this application to July 15th? Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Great, thank you. All right. We will continue our items this evening to item 8B. This is 201 North Street, and this is map 40, lot 21. This is a site plan subdivision amendment to revise dwelling units within. This is a site plan subdivision amendment to revise dwelling units within a proposed original application, and this is presented by Authentic Foundations, 300 North LLC and Sabago Technics. And this is a continued application review and public hearing this evening. Board members, any disclosures or conflicts on this item? Seeing none, Emily, anything to add on this?
Uh, yes, just some updates from our end. We did receive an emailed updated wastewater discharge application. The capacity to serve letter was issued for the original application, but WRRD asked that the size of the units be confirmed through their application process, so we just wanted to document that we did receive that for you. The other thing that was noted is at the last meeting, the board had asked for draft conditions of approval and findings of fact for you to start your review on it, and just want to make sure that you received a copy of that, so that's what you just got from me. And I can pull it up on the screen if and when you're ready to review it. And the applicant did get a copy of this as well, so it's just a paper copy. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Emily. Board members, any questions for Emily at this time? All right, and with that, we will turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, my name is Matt Orr, civil engineer with Sabago Technics, here on behalf of Henry Hess this evening for representation from the technical side. The applicant is also here this evening to address any other questions that you all may have. As Emily stated, the last meeting, draft findings and conditions were requested for the board to review this evening, so that was the main focus here. The wastewater letter was filled out and received, as Emily noted. And really just a recap on the overall project, you know, it's a reduced reapproval from what was previously approved. Not a lot of changes overall as far as any stormwater infrastructure goes. So, any questions, happy to address anything.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for applicant at this time? Joyce?
One, Mr. Chair, there's a, there's a note here that the fire department had asked whether emergency access at Sococas was considered. Didn't, where, did we talk about that before? Sococas is at the very end of the development?
Yes. Yeah, and I know it was, it was talked about in the, the original application when it came through a few years ago, and then I know again recently. It was looked at, but it would require additional wetland fill and permitting through the Army Corps, and it was just decided that with those efforts, you know, the project was previously approved with the dead-end connection, so it wasn't necessary component at this time.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from board members? Jim?
Yes. There was just one question I had. It, it, the, it looks like the way there, the dumpster is located, that it would be like a rear-loading, I guess dumpster for the, and so the truck would pull in and then back to the, back into where the dumpster is located and then, and then pull ahead and then turn around and drive out. Is that, is that the sort of traffic pattern you're imagining for that trash truck?
It could be, I'm, I'm not familiar with the turning movement specifically for, for this project.
It, well, the reason I asked the question is because it, it looks further down, closer to Sococas, that there's room enough for a vehicle to sort of pull in and then back around, and, and so that there does appear to be adequate ability there for a, a, a large trash vehicle to be able to handle a dumpster, but I, I didn't know if you had any other thoughts on it. It, it looks like it's satisfactory, at least in my eyes. You don't have anything else to add?
I, I don't personally know. Sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. Thanks.
Yeah, I think the, I think, Jim, the, there's some turning movements on sheet, civil engineering sheet, twenty-three of twenty-three, it's page sixty-nine of my document, but it does look like there's quite a bit of turning. Any additional thoughts from board members? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, seeing that we advertise this as a public hearing, I move to open the public hearing for 201 North Street, map forty, lot twenty-one, and map fifty-three, lot one hundred and seventy.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second by Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion? Those in favor of opening the public hearing on this item this evening, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. If anyone is with us this evening that would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We will collect all comments and address them at the conclusion as necessary.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I'll move to close the public hearing.
I will second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion? Those in favor of closing the public hearing, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. Any final thoughts or questions? I know we have our findings of fact and draft conditions here.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a recommendation?
Yes, Emily.
I do recommend that the board look at the design review because those are the major items changing on this site plan amendment, and then anything relative to the changes that are being proposed. Like how are the buildings gonna look on North Street and on the main entrances to the development? I can bring up the plans and we can ask any info, but that would be a, a good, good starting point.
Sure. So Emily's put on the screen here the most recent modifications to the exterior of the building here. Any thoughts, questions, concerns from board members?
So this will be the, the front, and this will be the, the back. The front, I believe, will be facing toward the interior, and the back will be on the street side.
Jeff?
So essentially, what we see is the rear, the back elevation will be what's visible from North Street and from Roebuck Avenue. Is that the way I?
Correct.
I mean, it's gonna be pretty different in that area with the amount of trees. When I look at the landscape plan, you know, there's a, a lot of vegetation, so I think that there'll be a substantial amount of buffering. I think the whole space, field concept going down industrial, and going down North Street will feel quite different there, because for my whole life, it's been a field of some sort, so, but it also, you know, meets the buffering requirements. And I think design characteristics, they have the elements that they, I, I think it checks the boxes that we're looking for in our design criteria, which is kind of my thought, but it'll be a drastic change, so.
Any other thoughts from board members?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Jeff, it's obviously having buildings there will be a change, but you know, these have some variety as far as the roof lines, there are, you know, significant number of windows on each wall, so regardless of whether you're driving past on North Street or Roebuck, you're, you're not just seeing the backs of blank walls, you're gonna see windows, and, and there's gonna be, you know, it sounds like quite a lot of buffering, quite a few new plantings.
And, and I would add, across the street are multifamily dwellings, I believe, and, and many of the other buildings along North Street, and, and some on Roebuck too, at two, two-story buildings, so it will look a little more crowded, certainly, from North Street, but it looks like it would fit in with the neighborhood, particularly with what's across the street and, and the other houses on North Street, so I, I think it, I think it should fit.
Jeff?
Because I wanted to be careful, and thank you, Emily, for bringing up that we should be reviewing the design criteria, because we're kind of, you know, making a slight amendment to what was previously approved, and, you know, might have been more my preference to try to have connection to Sococas, so that was more of a, of a street feel. I struggle because this isn't really, you know, a vision that we've been accustomed to in Sococas most of our lives, but we're, we're, we're feeling this pressure and, and direction from council to increased density, infill, and I think this is doing it, right? And I think if we do it in a controlled manner, let them build this out and let people see what it is, that will help our, our rate of growth, and, and rather than having all of these units scattered out in our rural conservation district on three-acre lots, we're, we're doing some benefits, right? We're in town, we're, I think the historic district just stops before the railroad tracks, so we're, we're getting some pretty close infill. I don't think it's, you know, we have to be cautious about North Street, obviously the traffic volume, but I think if the developers listen to what the city's asking for and, and kind of design to that, to make it fit, I think we kind of, you know, you know, it has to go, move forward and, and then get a vibe from the pulse of the community of how they like these moving forward. This one and the, the other one we just approved a couple of weeks ago, same idea, still in town, in density, but at least they're giving us more of a neighborhood feel. I have a lot of, you know, heartburn when we do a back lot split and there's a house at somebody's backyard, but it doesn't really face anything, it's just like kind of plop there. At least we're getting some continuity, some cohesiveness of, of a neighborhood feel of, of some capacity with this, so I don't, I don't have any issues with the design criteria. Like I said, I think there's a lot of landscape buffering that Henry's designed into this, so, thank you.
Good, thank you, Jeff. Any additional thoughts from board members? Do we have a finding on design review, Emily? In our packet here?
We do, and I also put the ordinance section online up on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, C is compatibility with neighboring buildings, and I think we pretty well covered that with the condos across the street, and, you know, Roebuck and Bonnet Thon are well-built out, fairly compact neighborhoods.
We don't have a specific finding on each one of these, I just recommend you kind of like read through it and make sure that you're comfortable with the design analysis relative these, to these standards on the screen.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's what I was looking for, making sure that we felt that finding of fact, item eight C, met that intent there.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I think according to my count here, we have findings of fact, eight C, G, H, I, and K that we need to address.
And S. S is talking about infrastructure and we need to make a finding.
Yes, of course, yes. So would we, should we do each one individually, or propose changes to each one and then just vote on them all at the end?
My preference would be, if you don't mind, if we could maybe work through Emily's draft on the screen, just as kind of a informal, line by line, and then we can make a motion on it all at once at the end, my preference.
Yep, that worked well recently.
Do you want to go through the ordinance standards first relative to design from here, and then just make one global motion relative to these? Undesign review amendment?
I think that's fine. Board members? So with that, we talked about the compatibility and the connectability. Building height, here we have two-story structures, we have many similar structures in that two-story height along North Street and within the neighborhood. I feel that's very compatible. We don't have any long lengths of wall, as Emily has shown on the, on that previous rendering there. There's walls, there's windows, there's roof elements. Exterior materials, board and batten, we have some metal roofing. That all seems compatible with the neighborhood and the area. Gambraal roof drapes, very common along North Street as well. The, the mutton pattern of the windows and the fen- fenestration, those are very compatible as well. Alluding to not a modern type of window opening or vernacular, so that, that works well. We have circulation within the site, we have sidewalks, we have pedestrian access, that all works well. We have our parking, we talked about that, we have a little bit, we've gained some parking area at each unit, so that, that seems to work pretty well here. We talked about some vehicular circulation. We do have low roofs at entries. That does meet nine, brings that human-scale environment.
And front porches?
And front porches, yes. Uh, we, and we touched upon pedestrian access within the sidewalks. Street trees, landscaping works well. There isn't really, the street trees, by definition, on the street, it's one sort of parking access, there's. by definition on the street. It's one sort of parking access. There's that condition I feel has been met. There's quite a robust landscaping plan here, so I think that that can, that item's been met. So I guess other thoughts from board members, but I think I think the proposal we have before us satisfies these 11 items.
Agreed.
So Emily, as we've done in the past, will do we want to review and adjust these findings on the screen again? Okay, fantastic. So Jim, as you had mentioned, we have item C was our first item that we needed to make an amendment to. And I believe that's where we were. Compatibility with neighboring buildings.
It was, Mr. Chair, and I would suggest we, on C, we delete the last sentence. And insert that based upon the application materials, including the most recent plans, the board finds the proposed buildings compatible with neighboring buildings. If everyone agrees, that's satisfactory.
Sure. Any additional thoughts from board members? All right, great.
And Mr. Chair, on item G, 8G. Again, I would suggest we eliminate the last sentence. And insert based upon the application materials and plans, there is sufficient landscaping and buffering onsite to minimize the impact of the parking areas and other features on neighboring property.
Great. Any other thoughts from board members? I think that works well.
Mr. Chair, on item H, 8H. I suggest we eliminate the sentence that is written there. And instead, insert that based upon the application materials, plans, and testimony of the applicant, the proposed development will not have a significant detrimental effect on abutting properties.
Great. Any additional thoughts?
And Mr. Chair, on item H, I.
I.
I would suggest we eliminate the last sentence. And instead insert based upon the applicant's presentation and most current plans, there is adequate vehicular circulation and pedestrian access on the property.
Great. Any additional thoughts?
And Mr. Chair, on item H, 8K. I would suggest we eliminate the last sentence. And insert the applicant has submitted the wastewater discharge form. And therefore, the standard is met.
Any additional thoughts from board members?
And then, Mr. Chair, I think the last one that requires change is 8S for utilities. And I would suggest we eliminate the last sentence. And insert based upon the application materials and most current plans, the proposed development will not unreasonably burden sewers, storm drains, water lines, or other public utilities.
Great. Any additional thoughts from board members?
I think on that one too, Mr. Chair, I would add that the applicant has submitted an updated wastewater discharge form. Maybe we need to eliminate the sentence that says WWRD has requested. Sorry, of course I do that right after you shut down the screen.
No, that's fair because we updated K with similar verbiage.
Right.
So Joyce, you're suggesting just eliminating that sentence?
Yeah, I mean, in addition to applicant has submitted, delete the sentence that says WWRD has requested that the applicant submit an updated wastewater discharge form.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I agree.
Do board members find any additional adjustments to any of these findings? I don't see any myself.
Mr. Chair, it looks like the findings under number nine, regarding the Saco subdivision ordinance, it looks like those findings are satisfactory to me, and I don't see any need to make any changes on those.
I guess I see one quickly here, Emily. There's 9F. I'll mimic Joyce's comment regarding the wastewater request. Other than that, I think.
Good point.
The rest of it seems to be in order.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the revised findings of fact as we have discussed and as have been noted on the draft form.
Thank you for the motion, Jim.
I'll second.
Second by Joyce, thank you. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chair, I didn't notice any need to change the draft conditions of approval. I don't know if any other board members found anything there that should be changed. Mind if I say one word?
Hold one moment, please. I didn't have any myself either, Jim. Any other board members? Sure, the applicant has a no question or? Can you give your name and address for the record?
I'm Simon Baylen. I'm president of Authentic Foundations. The one item I would ask if we can look at, and it came up with three several banks and attorneys somehow have difficulty reading certain conditions. The condition of how this is phased or all utilities need to be in place and base level gravel being in place for the entire site before we can get, go vertical on any of the foundations is becoming a very large turnoff for lenders because we start spending a lot of funds before any units can come to rent. So our ask is when you enter the site, you have a choice of going left or right. There are six units that nicely subdivided on the right-hand side if you make it right, and another six, and then your last five would be further drive down. It's come from three separate banks, so they ask us to phase it that way, even though we would roll all the way through. But as we have the utilities and everything stubbed in for the first part, get base level gravel for the first six units. As we're working on site work for the next six units, allow us to go vertical on the first six. They're reading the way the conditions are written as. We need to stub in all utilities, bring in all electrical sewer, complete the entire site with base level gravel before we can go vertical on any unit, and that's just kind of scaring them.
Okay. Emily, is that? That is a previous condition?
I believe it's a previously approved condition, yeah. We usually do attach the previous approval letter when we send out the amendment. But it wasn't something that we were up for review on tonight.
So that yeah, because that hasn't been part of it, that's not something we can that's not something we can adjust tonight, right?
The applicant could work with staff and do a, if the board was comfortable with it, I guess do a staff amendment request. But they'd need to work with staff on it, and only if the board finds that they're comfortable with that. Otherwise, they'd have to come back to the board.
Jeff, thoughts from board members?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I have a little bit of hesitation. In all fairness, I understand the applicant's predicament that they're coming to light, but this amendment was nothing to do with phasing, and it's always been a project that was going to be done in one phase. And we didn't have anybody speak this evening. I know there was quite a bit of talk with the first time this went through, and I think it would only be fair if we're going to start amending that, that maybe we table and go back for another public hearing, renotice, so that the neighbors would have some opportunity to speak on how phasing this project could possibly affect them. I don't think, that wasn't even on the radar for the review. And I thought we were doing a very close review of just the slight changes of the decrease in size, removal of the garages. So I would not be in favor of amending any sort of phasing conditions or provisions at this point without at least hearing from neighboring or public hearing again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
My apologies if I'm using the wrong term. We're not looking to phase it. It's absolutely not what we're looking for. The bank doesn't want us to have more than six foundations open at one time, but what they don't want is for us to complete all site work before we have, I think the plan allows us to have foundations in before we go beyond base level of gravel. So not phasing, we would start unit number one and go all the way to the 17th building, but it's just, they don't want us completing all the site work before we start vertical. If, we're talking about, you know, 12 months of site work, but the first six will be ready to go vertical in three months. So not phasing as in we're going to build six, wait six months, build another six, wait six months. We're going to roll right through the project, but the way that they're reading it right now is Saco will not allow us to go vertical on a single unit until the last piece of roadwork is done all the way to the end. So I think it's just, they're not comprehending the way that it's written, but their attorneys and when they say no, they say no. So we absolutely do not want to phase it, so if that's what it sounded like. Not the right word.
Sure. Emily, does that, does that sound familiar in the city's interpretation of where we've been at historically?
So as far as, we're always happy to work with people. There have been projects in the past that if it's a small, if they say they want to do one phase and then the next, I allow them to break it up into a phase. But they have to go, they have to bring that to preconstruction and staff has to sign off on how the phasing will be done. And in most cases, it's something that's going to be completed in one step right after the other. So that we kind of know how construction is working on the site. It's not really like a phased approval, if that makes sense. I don't know the background of how this number six. This is the approval letter back from 2022. I don't know how this number six came about. I wasn't with you all when you added this on here.
And I think just to step in, that is the one that is in question, and it's mostly because it alludes to before they can pull full building permits for any of the structures, they have to have complete paved road, base pavement in place. So just construction sequencing wise, you know, running equipment, materials in and out of there once that base pavement, there's just, there's a lot of room, and that's where lenders have some hesitation as far as, you know, damage to infrastructure that has just been installed while you're trying to work on the houses that need to go up.
But Nat, isn't that a reason to have all the roads like completely finished before you start running these heavy trucks over them with, you know, cement trucks and
with, you know, cement trucks and stuff? Isn't that a reason to have all that done?
Certainly some of the infrastructure and the gravels, but I think it's more the actual pavement piece that is holding things up. And it's just that they wouldn't be even allowed to start vertical on one of the units until all of that infrastructure is in. So it...
I'm just trying to think of how we would address that here. I mean, because we've had the amendment, and the amendment, as Jeff pointed out, has been for very specific changes. And we're okay with all of that. But this is just just a little different. I'm not sure how we deal with that at this stage without the public, as Jeff mentioned, without the public participating in some way. Although frankly, I would think that if it can all be accomplished with the city staff working together with a developer, then that's fine. If it's like all one, one continuous project that's being done, not broken up by six months or a year of between phases.
Can I ask, Emily, what... I mean, I know you don't have necessarily other applications at the ready, but what is... Is this an unusual provision compared to our usual conditions of approval?
No, not for Saco. The only thing that we've done differently in the past is you said certain things have to be in on CO, certificate of occupancy versus full building permits, but I have a sense that this was something that was discussed and put in for a specific reason. I don't know what that was at that time. But I would be happy to get more details. I mean, I guess there's two paths forward. Either moving forward with what you've accomplished tonight, and I can work with Henry and Matt on the answer to that question or tabling it and getting more details.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. So we do have memo from civil, from our city engineer, Joe Laverrier, about adding that verbiage. So that verbiage shows up a few times here in the application. So if if we want to make it, if the applicant would like to make an adjustment to it, I agree that we table we table further discussion on it and work with staff on understanding that or working through it and coming back to the board. Or we move forward as intended, and if the applicant would like to come back, we can come back for an amendment on the conditions, right?
And they can do that, or I can just vet out more details. I know Henry did ask me a similar question months ago, so I could vet out more details with Henry and see if it's something doable at the staff level if the board thinks that that would be sufficient. And I can report back at the next meeting.
It's in a, it's in Joe Laverrier's recent memo from March 6th about that condition. He has some notes in there about Roebuck being paved May 15th, so in a very short nine days, so I don't know if that date's still applicable. But I'm not sure if he's looked at that in part of what's happening at Roebuck. So that's, it seems like there's, unfortunately, I think this is a complicated piece to the condition as you're alluding to, so I guess thoughts from board members. And I guess I'm fine, you know, your thoughts as well, if you would like to, like us to move forward or to table further discussion and then you work with staff on doing it. But I agree just right now, sort of last second, I don't think I'm comfortable making an adjustment to that condition without knowing more about it, but...
I'd love the opportunity to work with staff on that, and if it's something that could be changed minorly in the language to appease the lender, we can move forward. That would be great.
Okay, so you would support sort of... I guess we have a couple pieces to this, but if we table further discussion this evening, you work with staff on that condition of approval, we'll come back with revised conditions of approval. The other piece to it is, since we've closed the public hearing, we have timeframe on a few items, right? Or that component of it, so we have to make a decision or a finding on the application within thirty days. So if we can work through it with staff within thirty days, then perhaps that's the best avenue to take.
So I'm sure with what's happening with interest rates right now, we're ready to close on the loan, and they need the plans stamped. So my preference is we finish what we started tonight, and if it needs to come back, we'll come back for a public hearing. If the bank needs something further than what we could figure out at staff level.
Okay, I understand. Emily? Board members? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm fine, but that language is not being altered tonight. We can't. And I'm fine going conditions of approval for our amendment this evening. But I'm not okay with delegating anything to the staff to try to make a change to that. I think that was in there probably very specifically for protection of some neighbors. I think we also had some issues in town, you know, ten, fifteen years ago with a subdivision that wasn't fully built out. And it got pretty messy with their going after the security funds to finish it, so... And I don't think it's fair to other developers who have the means to get it done. So, I mean, one of the things I was excited about when this application changed, when it was being, the approval was being changed to a new owner, is that they had a very impressive credentials for the projects you've gotten done, and it seemed like this would be a very positive step. So at this point, I'd say let's, I'm comfortable moving forward with our approval this tonight, but no changes and no permission of phasing. Thank you.
Understand, thank you. And we would encourage the applicant to speak with staff and lender if that's not out of sorts, but to make sure that everyone's on the same page and understanding that condition and how the city understands it as well, that to work with you on that. That seems, Emily's mentioned that before, so that...
Great.
That seems to work.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the conditions, the draft conditions of approval for 201 North Street.
I'll second. Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second. Jeff? Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve subdivision site plan amendment for the 201 North Street project.
Thank you for the motion, Jim.
I'll second.
Second by Joyce, thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero. Great, thank you.
All right, continuing along here, our next item on our agenda this evening is item eight C. This is Eastview Parkway in MAP 64, Lot 6-2-2. And this is a site plan review for a new seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty square foot, two-story office storage flex space with associated site improvements. This is presented by Bad Dog Properties in Sebago Technics, and we have a continued public hearing and continued application review this evening. This is within the Park North contract zone. Board members, any disclosures or conflicts on this item? Emily, anything to add?
It was requested that we present draft findings and conditions, so we have done that. I think this one will have a fair amount of edits to be made. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Emily. Any questions for Emily at this time, board members? All right, and with that, we have the applicant with us this evening, I believe.
Good evening, Matt Ora with Sebago Technics, here on behalf of Bad Dog Properties LLC. They're also here this evening to address any questions. Since we were here last, we responded to a round of peer review comments as well as city engineer review comments and have incorporated those items into our plans. As Emily mentioned, we did request draft findings and conditions for this meeting to review with you all. One item that we did want to discuss is a request for a waiver on the internal landscaping within the parking area and meeting the 10% requirement. Currently, we are at a little over 5%. And due to some operational needs with larger vehicles and truck movements, we do have some plantings along buffered areas and other areas of the site that do provide some of that shading effect, especially along the property line, which aren't necessarily accounted for, I would say, in the overall square footage assessment. But I would like to discuss that further with the board this evening.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for the applicant at this time? Jim? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Matt, I had, I wanted a little clarification on the truck turning movement. The one in our packet was dated March 20th, 2025. And the engineering memo from April 29th, 2025 calls out that that WB 64 tractor trailer movement doesn't appear to work. Have you, have you done, because to me, it looks like it has to go over some of the curb line as well. Have you made any changes to that turning movement overlay and some of the curb lines to make that acceptable to the city engineer or?
We have made changes. I would say they haven't been submitted for the final review with the city engineer. I know that that was in a most recent review memo we received from him. I believe that was one of the final comments that needed to be addressed within his package, which is a condition, I know a draft condition this evening is responding to his final comments.
And then I had a couple of questions, Mr. Chair, on some snow storage areas that you're calling out. And it's kind of hard because you've got it on like a site plan for snow storage, but then you go and overlay the landscape plan, and some of the areas looks like you're calling out for snow storage. There's vegetation planted there. So how is that going to work with the conflict? Are they, you know, are they going to destroy the trees that were planted to store snow? And my next question was, how does that work for some of the line of sites for the turning movement as you exit? I think one of them is in that center planter that you have between the two driveways. It's tagged as snow storage area. And I'm assuming your LSA stands for landscape area when you do it. So I'm kind of getting the feeling that there's not really any snow storage available with the landscape plan. They're not in harmony. So am I, did I miss something, or is there conflict?
I would, I mean, we did work with, between the two plans, we overlay them. I know they're not shown together. But largely, the snow storage areas that would overlap where LSA is called out, those would be the mulching bed extents around some of those trees. So there is room for snow to be placed underneath, you know, the taller growing trees. Within any of the lower plantings, there weren't any snow, shouldn't be any snow storage areas called out. As far as line of sight, that middle planting area where the snow storage was on either side of the light pole, that is, you know, fifteen feet from the, almost twenty feet from the roadway. So I don't foresee any line of sight issues as someone is entering or exiting.
Yeah, I guess when I look, sorry, when I look at this colored plan that you have versus the landscape plan in the packet, it seems pretty clear that any of your snow storage would be from internally in the parking lot by the light pole. I don't see how anything would really work. To the top left of the building area, there's a large tree on the corner, and then it looks like a three, four-foot buffer to your property line. I just... And I know that we ask a lot. We're asking for snow storage, we're asking for buffering, we're asking for all these criteria and try to make them fit, but I'm feeling like it just, it doesn't work as it is right now. I feel like we need to come up with some provisions for some storage that will work, especially with the vehicular traffic. And I think it's great you're disclosing that you need to have the larger over-the-road tractor trailers do your deliveries. But I just, I don't think the two plans, the landscape plan and site plan for snow storage work together, so...
Matt, do you, I see quite a few parking spaces on this plan. Are they all required for this building? I mean, do you have, like, each one of those parking spaces is critical for the size of the building and the number of people who expect to be in it?
Yeah, so the parking, let's zoom in to over here. As it's shown, so within the industrial zone, we were required with this size building to have seventeen spaces. That just happened to work out with what the applicant and what their needs are as far as employee counts. With that, we provided the two ADA spaces to meet ADA requirements. And then in addition to those, there's also oversized spaces, one being in front of an overhead door adjacent to the building, and the others being painted and designated areas in the parking. Those are for storage of their work vehicles. They have a couple larger keep-on-site and bring-to-job sites, so it's not really, you know, those spaces need to be available as employees come for the day and then take a work vehicle during the day for work and then return.
So none of those spaces could eventually turn into snow storage because they're all needed?
It's possible, I think, like, one or two of certainly the employee, the employee areas certainly could be adequate for snow storage. And even if it's temporary and then hauled off after a storm event, for sure.
Could you, could you come on up, or Matt, could you relay for the...
Yeah, so the applicant said it's not, it's not a concern for them if the need would be to identify snow would be removed from the site after a storm event. If there's not adequate storage areas provided on site.
Okay. Okay. Jeff?
So that you'd be okay if that was tied into a condition of approval, something clarifying how soon after a storm event the snow needs to be removed?
Yes.
Any other thoughts, questions from board members? The applicant also mentioned a waiver for landscaped islands. Thoughts from board members on that?
Mr. Chair, I think the, I mean, there, it looks like a good buffering is being provided along the sides of the property and in that one island that exists there. And I understand the purpose of having the 10%, I guess, internal landscaping. But, I mean, it seems to me this plan does a fine job, even though it only hits the 5% mark. So I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with that waiver.
Would you like to see the peer reviewer?
I was just going to ask, yeah, I was looking for it myself here, and I think that would be a good idea, Emily.
Yeah, it looked like Regina Letter, and it felt like it would be relatively easy to meet the requirement internally.
So I guess with that, Matt, we have, we have seven oversized parking spaces you mentioned. And those are for company vehicles for, let's say, the overnight. And then employees come in, they park in a typical parking space, and then take, take one of the work vehicles out. Is that how I understand it?
Correct.
And we've, and those company vehicles get stored at the front closest to Eastview. It seems like all those parkings, is that?
That's correct.
Is there a strategy in there, like a marketing thing to put the company vehicles in the front, opposed to sort of in board of the site more? Are they sort of the, so now where we have company vehicles, I don't know what they, I don't know what they look like. I don't know what they are, but they're, they're front and center. They're the first thing, that everyone's introduction into the site are these vehicles after hours? Is that sort of, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think there was any intent to be a marketing measure by why they were placed there. It just was how it aligned. More they are oversized, so it's just, that was the area that had more maneuverability, I would say, rather than sticking those towards a more dead end, more of a hammerhead type of situation.
Okay. So Jim, you're, you're okay with the requested waiver?
I, I am, because I, I mean, I appreciate the, our landscape reviewers' comments. But it looks like several parking spaces are going to be lost there. And the extended curb line on the, at least the bottom of the page that I'm looking at, well, sure, diagrams on the, on the screen. But that, that, that extended curb line there, I think, might actually make it more difficult for large vehicles and tractor trailer trucks to maneuver there. So I'm, I am concerned about that. So I, I think the proposal that the applicant has come up with, while it may not be ideal to our landscaper, landscape reviewer, I think, all things considered, I think the proposal they've come up with is satisfactory.
All right, thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I tend not to lean toward supporting a waiver. You know, if this were an industrial park, I might have a little different take. But this is kind of a mixed use area. And we have some, you know, development that's going on that is very, are very aesthetically pleasing. And this building still has much more of an industrial look to it. I know they did add quite a bit on the rear and side elevation to meet our design criteria. But I think we need to try to do something to soften that, that look. The other thing too is, when we look at this turning movement, the vehicle has to kind of come in from internal, like, it's not coming in from Route 1. The turning movement's only a one direction for that trailer truck. So now we're kind of intending, intending that they're going to go through the other portion of waterfall drive, basically, right? They're going to have to go in and then loop around to Eastview Parkway, like they're heading out to Route 1. So we're intending to bring large truck traffic into a more residential area. I don't know, maybe that was strategic with the signalization that's going to take place there. But, you know, it seems like this is a very tight lot for what they're trying to accomplish, and I, and I feel for that. But I also think it's important that we, you know, be respectful of how this area is going to be built out. And it doesn't look like, you know, a larger commercial warehouse facility tucked in with, with some, you know, other type of higher end retail, has a lot of aesthetic value or design appeal. And there's a lot of pavement here. And there's a lot of things, you know, those oversized parking spaces, you know, they're put there. But it's also kind of a conflict with the way the turning vehicle of that, that they provided coming in, that tractor trailer has to swing very close to those parking spots. So I think it might need a little bit more work. And I, I tend not to be in favor of wavering. Maybe they could do some sort of an outcrop to gain, I think Regina has said about three parking spaces is about the area that she needs to meet, to satisfy the requirement for interior landscaping. Is there something that could be done on that front corner of the building where there's not currently parking? And it may also soften some of the appeal of the building. So at this point, I'm not really in support of a waiver for the internal landscaping. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts from board members?
May I address something with Jeff real quick?
Sure, hold on one moment.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Jeff. I mean, it seems like this, this revised plan that Regina proposed, while this may not be ideal for the applicant, and you may want to mix it up a little bit. I mean, it does provide for 14 standard sized spaces and three oversized spaces. Breaks up the lot a little more, satisfies the internal landscaping. I think, you know, I understand there are situations where it's impossible to provide the 10%, but she's showing that it is in fact possible to meet the standards. And it seems to me that we, we would grant a waiver in a case where it's impossible or extremely difficult to meet the standards. And I don't, I don't think that's the case here.
All right, thank you, Joyce. Any other thoughts from board members?
So if I'm understanding this correctly, with our landscape reviewer, it looks like the plan that the applicant has proposed, I mean, there are five green areas on the plan here that she's suggesting be used for landscaping. And it looks like three of the five the applicant's already proposed to use. Is that, is that right?
That's my understanding as well, yeah.
Yes, I think, I think the only change, she did expand one of them, which is where we were trying to utilize some snow storage, so it's.
But that's, even though it's landscaping, depending upon what you put there, you could still use that for snow storage, right?
Yes.
So what, what we're really talking about here is, is the green in the top and the middle and the lower right green area. Those are really the areas that are sort of in dispute here, right? Between the landscape reviewer and, and the applicant.
Essentially, sure, yeah.
Essentially? Well, I mean, if, if that's all that's really in dispute here, and according to a landscape reviewer, you already have, you actually have nine spaces more than you, than you need for this lot. I thought, I thought you needed all the parking spaces, but she's at least suggesting you have nine additional spaces over what the ordinance would require you to have.
Correct, there's additional parking over the.
So if, if that's the case, I guess I'll, I'll change my mind a little bit. If all we're talking about is eliminating three spaces and you'll still have an excess of six spaces beyond what the ordinance requires, what she's proposing doesn't seem too burdensome. So I, Jeff and Joyce have convinced me.
I would, I would say that the lower space towards the one exit where she has the arrow with the turning movement, that will not be able to be achieved. We, we did try to accommodate that, but we, we need that area for the truck turning movement. So that, that landscape area, I know for sure, cannot be added to the plan.
Yeah, that, go ahead.
I mean, one of these you have marked as a parking space right now. So presumably, the upper, the upper lower space that's labeled swap one space and extend curb line with required turning radius 165 square feet. I mean, maybe, maybe you don't extend the curb to the bottom, but it seems like the top, I mean, if that, if that's a parking space and there's a vehicle parked there, that, that's not going to be available for.
Sure, but these are, these are sort of graphics that the peer reviewer sort of put together so we can sort of quantify and, and look at the space and the shapes that we're.
Just thinking we could, you know, we might be splitting the difference a bit by saying, well, okay, you don't, you don't make that green area, the lower right green area, quite as large.
So Jim, just to make something known to you guys.
Come right up to the, come right up to the microphone.
It might seem like we don't really need these spots, like we, but we really do need every spot we can get. So it's, you know, we might be over what you guys are requiring, you know, the 14 spaces, but we, it is really urgent for us to try to keep as many spots as we can keep. Because we do need them, we do have people coming and going, you know, we have employees, you know, vehicles staying there, vehicles coming and going. Can I address the other thing with Jeff real quick, or do you want to wait on that?
Yeah, you can provide your thoughts, sure.
Okay, so Jeff, for you, the trucks, they're not really going to need to drive through the, any of the residential areas. They're going to be able to drive right off of the main drag. And they should be able to either pull in from that one and do a turn to back in. And then when they leave, they can proceed to leave the way they entered. So I don't really think there's going to be a big problem with, like you were mentioning, with truckers having to drive through, you know, all the way around through to get out the other way. They should be able to drive in, pull into our lot, back up to our building, and then proceed to leave the way they entered.
So we can have an updated turning movement on that? Because that's the, the, the movement that Jeff was referring to had, didn't show, it didn't, it didn't show what you described. That's, that's where he was.
Either one, though, even with them back into the bottom one, they should be able to back, they should be able to pull in and then back into there and then be able to leave the same way. So they're not going to have to go, you know, doing like what you were kind of explaining.
Sure, Emily, do you have the, that graphic? Could you throw that on the screen? That one is the 104th page of our document. Or the document I'm looking at. If that helps you.
Is it this one?
That is the one I believe I'm looking at, and I think Jeff is looking at as well. So this is, this is the graphic that Jeff is referring to. So it, it seems we're, we're coming from the south and kind of, kind of looping around. So this is, so we can get an updated one of those, that's great. I, I understand and appreciate the vehicles and the storage of them and the parking. Added parking versus a waiver for internal landscaping, adding more pavement, I understand that's part of the program and the scope. That one, that one's hard for me as well. I'm wrestling with that. It doesn't seem like it's a heavy lift to, to work some of that area. I think we've, in the past, been able to work through the landscaped islands here. That's preferred. If, if with turning movements, I think Matt knows, if we, if we load some landscaped area more heavily in one area and, and we don't have these fingers, I think the boards, we've been, you know, receptive to that in some instances. But I, I think to, to have more than the required or the minimum amount of parking, to have less landscaping, that's, that, that one's hard for me as well. Any other thoughts from board members? So, so I guess with that, if, if board members agree, I guess we have, we really have sort of two items then to, I guess, that we need to have resolved in some fashion. Landscaped islands, the internal landscaping, and the turning movement. So I guess thoughts from board members on how we would like to receive that information and proceed with that? We do have some items here that were revised. I think overall that works. I believe the applicant has captured most, if not all, of the other items we were looking for as well. Do board members have any other thoughts or questions with the application? Jeff?
So, Mr. Chair, I mean, the only other question I had is if, I mean, they'd made some substantial changes with design standards. And if everyone was okay with that, I would feel like the only two outstanding issues would be the internal landscaping and the turning movements. And I would be in favor, because there's kind of a dance that takes place between the city engineer and the landscape architect. I would be in favor of just tabling until they can have those items worked out. Because that could probably be some back and forth for what they're going to do for internal plantings somewhere that'll be cohesive, particularly where we're, it sounds like we're completely changing the turning approach for the delivery vehicle now, to be coming in from the, from the north off of Route 1. So I think we should wait until we see all those documents before we do a final, final approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts from board members?
So I guess, Mr. Chair, yeah, so you're just in the, in the interest of moving things along and letting the applicant know exactly what we need from them, discussing the elevations and finding out if we have any other issues. And I'm in agreement with that. I think, I think the revised elevations are, you know, pretty, pretty attractive for a warehouse type building. I think that certainly meets our design standards. And the landscaping and the truck turning movements were the only issues that I had highlighted as well.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other thoughts?
I agree, I think the.
I agree, I think the design standards have been met. We also have this as a public hearing this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Carolyn. Any additional discussion on the motion? Are those in favor of reopening the public hearing for Eastview Parkway lots, map 64, lot six dash two dash two? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. If anyone is with us this evening to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and we will collect all comments or questions and address them at the conclusion.
Mr. Chair, seeing no member of the public wishing to speak, I'll move that we continue the public hearing until our, I'm thinking our next scheduled meeting day, if that's, does that work?
The next scheduled meeting day is May 20th.
Continue to May 20th?
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor of continuing the public hearing to May 20th? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. So we talked about the revised building design, felt that was, that met the conditions or, excuse me, met the criteria of the ordinance. And the remaining items are the landscaping, internal landscaping and the turning movements. Any other thoughts from board members? Emily, in regards to the peer review, for example, is there a particular anticipated response time from our third party peer reviewers, understanding where we're at with schedule and the opportunity for the applicant to work through some items, submit to staff, receive comments and sort of continue the process and just sort of refine that?
Yeah, May 20th would be tight. It sounds like there was some work ongoing to respond to some of the comments that remained out there. So I don't know if, how quickly the items can be submitted. Usually it takes a few days to hear from our peer reviewer. If it's a full review they're doing, that's a brand new review, it's usually two weeks. But this would just be a partial follow-up.
Okay. So those tend to be a little bit more expeditious?
Yeah, and it might just be like an email rather than a full memo, I'm not sure.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Depending on how clearly the, the comment and the questions are addressed.
Sure. Any other thoughts from board members?
Mr. Chair, I, I, I agree with all the comments that have been made about the, about the building and how it, how it looks. And this project is really, it'll be a very nice project when it's done. It will fit in the neighborhood well. I think once we can get this internal landscaping sorted out, I, I think the landscaping will otherwise be adequate and look fine for this, for this, this project. So there's just those, those two questions with the internal landscaping and the truck movement. Once those are resolved, I, I think we're, we'll be able to work our way through with some positive findings of fact and conditions of approval. Hopefully we can do that on May 20th. So I'll, I'll, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we continue this matter until May 20th.
Thank you for the motion, Jim. Any additional discussion on the motion? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, if we may, maybe appropriate to ask the applicant. Seems like staff is thinking that it could be possibly tight for them to pull it all together. And between Matt and his team with Henry, Henry's a very competent, you know, landscape designer. Do you feel like that would be enough time to get all your submissions in? Or would you rather that we amend our motion and push it out in additional two weeks to give you some time?
No, nope, I think we can get everything in time for that, for sure.
Great, thank you. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor of continuing application review for Eastview Parkway, map 64, lot six dash two dash two to May 20th? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. Great, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, can we have a five minute recess, please?
Sure, we'll take a five minute intermission here at eight 14 PM.[1008.19]
All right, thank you everyone for that short recess. We will continue our applications for review this evening with item eight D. This is Eastview Parkway, map sixty-four, lot six dash two dash six. And this is a proposed six unit professional office building with associated site improvements. And this is presented by Bedard Homes and DM Consulting Engineers, DM Roma, excuse me. Again, I continue public hearing and application review for site plan review within Park North contract zone. Board members, any disclosures or conflicts on this item? Emily, anything additional to add?
Just we provided draft findings of fact and conditions as requested, and we did incorporate the city engineer's latest recommended conditions. Thank you.
Great, thank you Emily. Board members, any questions for Emily at this time? And with that, we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, Jason Haskell with DM Roma Consulting Engineers. Here with me is Kevin Bedard with Bedard Homes LLC. Since the last time we met, we've gone through a follow-up comments from the landscape reviewer. It looks like the change, the majority of the changes that we made to address her original comments, she was okay with. What she is looking for that I wanted to at least get your input on is regarding buffering on two of the sides of the property. She feels that the along Eastview Parkway is sufficient, and we've added the trees along the, I guess would be the southeast. I guess it would be plan east if you did get that plan that I emailed to you. The, we've added spruce trees along there, that was part of the amended plan. What we're looking at is, she was looking at wanting some buffering along the two other sides to the rear and to the, I guess would be to the west side. The, kind of, we came up with some reasons on why we can't really do that on a few different scenarios to the rear of the site. We've been looking at what was approved previously as part of the Park North subdivision. And according to the subdivision, all that, there's a twenty-foot wide easement in the back. That all the drainage upstream of this lot comes down and then goes into a wet pond that goes across Don Marie Avenue or Drive, I can't remember now. But, so, what we, what is very kind of unclear about that easement is, the only language for that easement is that it's a drainage easement benefiting lots three through six on Eastview Parkway. And that it's for drainage and the original design plans for the subdivision included a drainage swell back through there. That's about all the information that there's provided. So what we're concerned with is if we go in, we build the drainage swell, everything is conveyed the way it's supposed to be. But we also include, you know, say, four trees in there. And right now, there's not a lot of space between where the top of the drainage swell is going to be and the property line. So it's going to be a fairly narrow portion that they'd be able to put the trees. What is, I guess primarily my concern is if one of the butters comes in, needs to do some improvements for one reason or another, maybe they're, you know, something's backing up and theirs, and something needs to be done downstream of it. And a tree gets, you know, damaged or falls over or something like that because of the maintenance that's happened. Who's the one that's going to be responsible for that? And that's kind of where the vagality of that easement comes, kind of comes into play. We know that we're supposed to be putting in drainage through there. I don't know how that works with buffering and screening. Also, through that area, the butter has cleared right to the property line. And the only thing that's there right now is a wide-open field with stockpiles of, it looks like unsuitable material that has just been stored there. And I don't know what we'd be buffering to, because there's no structures or anything like that around there. So I guess that would be, kind of, I was looking for your input on that if you feel that it would be appropriate or needed for that as well. And then also along the western side, it would be the same side of the, that a contractor flex space next door was put in. They put a drainage swell right along the property line, and we have one that's going to be parallel to it, probably with only about a two-foot, three-foot wide section. That's going to be there for any type of, you know, buffering. The problem is, is depending on what we pick out there, if anything, it would have to have, if, it would probably be, the roots would be an issue with the drain, keeping the drainage conveyance through there. And also, stability of that slope through there. But mostly, you know, I think the last time we talked, you were happy, or everyone seemed to be on board with the design of the rear of the building. How it was a more aesthetically pleasing building out there, and that screening, breaking up that building didn't seem as much of a concern. But again, I was hoping to get some of your input on that as well. Hopefully so that we can respond accordingly to, to the peer reviewer. And obviously, we'll, we'll make that work if, you know, if push comes to shove and we need to work something out with the reviewer, then we can definitely do that as part of the follow-up. And hopefully, part of the conditions of approval as it's currently, I believe as it's currently written. I haven't had a chance to, I haven't seen them. I'm assuming it is, but.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Jim, questions?
Jason, the, I'm just looking at the landscape reviewers' comments, and I can understand why you'd be reluctant to put trees in there. Because the root system would be, could be a problem for the drainage. But Regina also suggested you could put in some shrubs or something like that, that, you know, the root systems would not be as dramatic. I mean, would you be able to do something like that for some small buffering to break up the entire wall?
I guess the question is, what is, with such a small space, I'm not sure what size shrub you could really put in there that's going to grow high enough that it's going to actually buffer anything of the building.
I, I'm guessing that she wasn't necessarily thinking of something that would hide the building. But just something that would, you know, some sort of planting that would sort of break up the wall. So, you know, I don't know, I don't know plants either, so, but I mean, something that's, you know, four feet high or something that wouldn't get any higher than that. You know, just a few of those placed along the, I guess be the westerly boundary and then the southwesterly boundary on the bottom, if I'm reading the plans correctly, would probably do the trick. And it doesn't.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that, it, you know, obviously this.
I mean, otherwise, I agree with you that, given what's around it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But if, if, to put anything massive or, you know, large, that with a large root system. But if she's suggesting some landscaping to just, you know, just sort of break up the walls, then it might not be that difficult to do.
And, you know, I think I discussed this in one of the previous meetings, was the, that abutting property. There may have been different standards at time. I don't think it was that long ago that that one was put in place, but there was no buffering on either side, on either side of the building. So I was just, wasn't a hundred percent sure of if the landscaping wasn't put in yet, or what the deal was. But there wasn't anything on either side, so I was just curious on if the standards have been adjusted since then.
I can speak to that. We've been going back and forth with that applicant, and they were supposed to present a buffering and fencing plan on that long side.
The side between the Bedard.
I believe so, but Lauren and Shannon have been working on that.
And that's the, the west side, you're saying? Not the rear?
I don't know, I don't want to speak for them, they've been going out and working on that matter.
Yeah, we can, I'll touch base with Lauren and Shannon and hopefully figure out what they're doing, because obviously, we don't want to double efforts either.
Okay, any additional thoughts from board members, questions, concerns? Jeff, yes?
Mr. Chair, I would move to reopen the public hearing for Eastview Parkway, map sixty-four, lot six dash two dash six.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff. And the second, Carrie Lynn. Any discussion? All right, those in favor of reopening the public hearing for Eastview Parkway, map sixty-four, lot six dash two dash six. Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. If anyone is with us this evening to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We will collect all questions and comments and address them at the conclusion.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one wishing to come forward and speak, I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff. And the second, Carrie Lynn? Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero to close the public hearing. Back to the board, any additional thoughts, questions, concerns? Seems the last item on the sort of discussion table here is some of that buffering, as Jim had mentioned. Thoughts, adequacy? We've got some more. Jason, what were the name of those trees that you applied to the east property line, you said? They were?
Black spruce?
Black spruce, yeah. Thought I saw spruce in there. Jeff?
I mean, my opinion, having looked what they've done, you know, they have a lot of interior landscaping, a lot of visual breaks within their parking lot. It's a very challenging lot. I mean, we're actually looking at a lot of these lots now. You know, yours only being a hundred and thirty feet wide by like three hundred feet long, it's a very difficult lot to try to meet all of these requirements within. I think you've done a very good job doing that. The other thing that I think we've all noticed is, too, is that the, the level of aesthetic design that they've brought to their building. They've really stepped up the game. And, you know, I know we're, we're walking that line of buffering. We're also, but they've done a lot of interior landscaping. It's not like they didn't do any landscaping. I think they've done a substantial amount of landscaping within. And part of, you know, their artistic media, what they do is, is design, right, and custom building. So in this, it's kind of their signature. I don't necessarily think we need to go and try to screen it all. So, and then with the uniqueness of, of the easement in the back portion, like he says, there's not a lot built out there right now. And we go through this quite often with whose responsibility is it going to be to buffer? You know, especially on a, on a tight property line like that. I don't see a lot of activity that would make it a challenge for mixed-use occupation or non-compatible uses. Their, their business hours are pretty standard during the daytime from what you've indicated for the proposed clients, and especially being owner-occupied. The vehicular traffic, almost all the headlight movement is going to be onto their own building. So I, you know, the turning movements within the interior portions of the parking lot. I think that, you know, we could move forward with their approval, and if, if some of the board members are a little uncomfortable, maybe we could, if the applicant's okay, let them kind of work it out with staff on that rear swell. Especially if they're going to be open to a softer, smaller plantings in the swell that they could still maintain without, you know, focusing, I think as Jim mentioned, as a big buffer. We're not trying to hide it, which is, if they need to soften it a little bit. But the fact, at the end of the day, is, we ask all of these requirements for storm runoff and management, and they all take up space on these lots. And how do applicants really develop anything? It's kind of a dance, right? We have to kind of let that medium take place. And I think this particular application has done a very good job making an aesthetically appealing lot, a very aesthetically appealing lot. I would be okay moving forward to, you know, concluding our conditions of approval and finding of facts this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts from board members? Joyce?
I guess my only thought, I mean, I agree with, I primarily agree with what Jeff said. I, I would be uncomfortable, I guess, just, just approving findings of fact and conditions of approval without something somewhat concrete about whether or not we want additional buffering. Because I don't, I don't think it's enough to say that they can work it out with staff later on. I think we have to decide, are we requiring additional buffering, are we not? And if we're requesting additional buffering, we should clarify what it is we're, we're looking for. But I, I think we need to have a concrete decision on that and not just, not just leave it to be determined. And, and I would be in favor of something low, you know, fairly low to the ground. I mean, Ryan Summers had mentioned maybe putting in a couple more black spruce along the property line. But, you know, low brush shrubbery, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, what were their, junipers, you know, something like that. Just to have a little softening without, without covering up the building.
And we're talking about the, the western side, or the left, if you're looking at the plan, to the left of the plan?
Right, yeah, because I think the, I think the swell is challenging.
Because we're showing the blacks, yeah, we're showing the black spruce on the east side, or to the right side of the.
And those are how far apart on this plan?
Fifty feet.
Right, and Ryan had suggested maybe putting them more like thirty feet on center and maybe squeezing a couple more in. I'm, I'm not so worried about that, because I think that's a, I mean, we know spruce get pretty big.
Yeah, that's kind of why I was concerned of putting the thirty-foot spacing, because it could turn into.
They're going to get, yeah, they're going to get big and wide. But yeah, but, but on the, yeah, left-hand side, putting in some sort of low shrubbery just to, just to break things up a little bit. I don't think that's too burdensome of us to ask.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other thoughts from board members?
I, I personally agree, I agree a little bit of both of you. I like to split the difference, I guess. I agree with Jeff's comment here, we have, we have some good landscaping here. The, the long, deep lot here is a little bit challenging. The architecture is, it's good. It is one of the nicer buildings we've seen recently, so that's much, much appreciated. I agree in that easement to not clutter it and add chaos to it and potential problems. We see problems with easements and drainage where there's just overgrown, it's, let's not add to it. I guess where the, the piece I differ a little bit is the, on that west side, I guess, I feel the shrubbery is just going to be insignificant. When, when the other lots get built out, then we're just going to have a little bit of shrubs. I, I think if, if anything were to go there, it needs to be taller, the plantings need to have some height to it to have any interest. There's another building on that adjacent site eventually, then we're just going to have a couple of little shrubs, that's just my opinion. So I guess, I guess that being said, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with, I, I don't find it necessary for, for this instance to overload that side. It's, it's close to the property line. We're going to have root systems, they're going to start, you know, stretching out, trying to get into the building. That all being said, I do agree with Joyce that we should, we should say we are content and satisfied. Or we want the applicant to work with staff and the peer reviewer after. So that's, I do agree with that for sure, but I'm just, I'm just concerned the few little shrubs is not going to have really any sort of impact, that's all. Not unless we were to line the whole thing, and we've, we've got a little walkway there on the side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, maybe there's smaller plantings, maybe it's okay. I'm, I'm hitter, I don't know, I'm hitter miss on that one. I don't think it's necessary, if the board feels we want to see something there, content.
And I'm not saying we absolutely have to have it, I'm saying we should tell them whether or not we want them.
Hundred percent. So that's just my thought. Any additional thoughts from board members?
Ms. Chair, I'm not, I'm not wedded to the idea of having, you know, any particular sorts of plantings on the, on the westerly side or the southerly side of the lot. I mean, particularly in the southerly side of the lot, since it's a drainage swell, you have to be careful of that anyway. But I was thinking simply that if, if we, as a board, felt that there needed to be something on the westerly side, in terms of plantings, then it shouldn't be anything more than shrubs. But, you know, frankly, I mean, I, I agree, it's a, it's a nice-looking building, we don't need to hide it. And so, if, if we all feel like those shrubs aren't going to really do a whole lot of help anyway, then I'd be fine with just eliminating those plantings, or any proposed plantings on the westerly side of the building or the southerly side.
Sure, thank you, Jim. I, I guess my final thought, and not to sort of backtrack, but perhaps there's, Emily stole the screen again. Perhaps there's a little bit of vegetation Jason added around those condensers. I know we've got some fence in there. So maybe, maybe a little bit of shrubbery around that mechanical equipment, front of the building. It'll help dress up that, that one little corner. Board members, you can say, no, I don't, I mean, we, I do, we are receptive to our, our third-party reviewers. We do appreciate their comments and expertise. So not to say we completely, completely disagree with them, but, I don't know, thoughts from board members or from the applicant here? Maybe, maybe a few bushes or a shrub or a planting or two in that area, maybe to, maybe to soften that one mechanical corner.
Up at the, I apologize, up at the front corner, up closer to Eastview Parkway, those two condensers right there.
Yes.
So this is actually a very tricky area, because there's the drainage swell coming from the property line. It pretty much starts on the property line, starts diving down. And then at the end of where the drainage swell comes back up, there's the underground power is running right through there, and then you have the condensers. So it's a very, that was a very tricky area of the site, and then to put landscaping on top of it kind of concerns me slightly, but I mean, we can.
Yep, no, that's, that's, that's why we're, that's why we're asking and discussing it here. So that, I see that here in that plan. You've got, you've got two lines of underground utility coming in, coming into the building, back out to the lights, pads, you've got that field inlet in there. I'm always, I don't want to add plantings to potentially disrupt drainage on the site. That's one of the, what do we hear, we hear traffic and we hear drainage and water from neighbors and from everybody, so that's, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Always appreciate the discussion, and I think you guys are right, because I tend not to wanna leave things open to staff or others to finish out an approval. But I was kind of weighing through and listening to this conversation, and our criteria reads under G, landscape, buffers and screens. And onsite landscaping is provided to minimize the impact of parking areas and other features on neighboring properties. And it seems pretty consistent, the majority of the board wants to address this side a little bit. But I guess can we unlock ourselves from thinking it has to be a planting? Can we say that, you know, yes, you have a very challenging area, could you do something creative in a small screen, like a fence screen of some sort that you might be able to put around that? Maybe better controlled, keep your plantings from encroaching on the condensing units? Maybe something very small that would grow seasonally, a little more of a planting or a flower? Because you already have a six-foot stockade fence there, right?
Right.
So we know there's a fence there, that's gonna be our screen. Maybe there's some small grasses or something that'll just kind of grow up in front of it, add a little character. And that meets the requirement of buffering. It doesn't have to be a larger plant, I don't think, the way I'm reading this. It's giving a visual break, and I agree, those condensers aren't ideal, but mechanically they had to go there, and that's a challenge. You've got a walkway now, you're bringing your line sets, you're doing all that mechanical stuff. Having that little stockade fence, whatever, and I'm sure with the creativity of use in the building, you'll do something with that fence. And then maybe some just small trimmable plants would work there. So would that make us all feel good? And maybe they could do something mirrored partway down the building, even though it's a dummy, it's just kind of the same sort of fence structure, a small screen that you just put there for the length of the building to help break it up. Then would the board feel like they've met an accomplishment? You know, just kind of, you know, more of an architectural screen, right? A small piece of fence that-
Are you thinking the full length?
No, 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 I'm thinking two individual sections.
Two individual sections.
But because you're doing one very functionally to screen the AC condensers, you put a second one partway down that is just more of a backstop for these small plantings that are gonna be there. You know, they get trimmed down every year. I mean, could that work, right? I mean, it's more in your avenue, it's creativity, it's architectural, but it's really just a couple panels of slope scallop something design that would be a screen. Because that's what our ordinance doesn't necessarily say, plantings, it says screen. Would that be an option that everyone could agree on and we could make this concrete tonight and move forward?
Thank you, Jeff. I think I'm following. Any thoughts from other board members?
Well, and there's stockade fencing at the back of the building, too, covering the other HVAC units, so, yeah, do the same thing with those, grasses or something. I mean, screening is, you're right, screening doesn't mean necessarily plantings, but, I mean, they've already taken care of that, they've already screened the condenser units.
Yeah, so now we're doing what we tell ourselves, we're not gonna do is design it, but I think as it sits today, for me, I can say that I'm comfortable, it meets the ordinance. We just have, we have the nice landscape around the front, it's soft, it's good. My only thought was, similar to what Jeff was saying, just if there were something soft around those front HVAC condensers, that could only help. I'm not sure we need it anywhere else, but I'll bring it back to the board. Want to add, just add additional plantings in that area, as Jeff had described, is everyone okay with it as presented? Let's circle back and keep it simple.
I think that'd be fine, Mr. Chair. I think that some small plantings up around that stockade fence would be, certainly would be acceptable.
Potentially some ornamental grass, something shallow roots or something?
Yep.
Okay. Couple thumbs up, some head nods.
I'm pretty sure at this point with the plan that he has in effect, I don't think he's gonna put something there that's gonna be ugly.
That's fair.
I mean, he's, you're not gonna put all that money, all that work into a plan like that and then, you know, have this lime green fence sitting around the, you know.
That's a great idea.
Stop, that's my favorite color, I'll buy.
Okay, so I think we have some direction there. Any other thoughts or concerns from board members on the rest of the application here? We open a public hearing, we close a public hearing. From there, it looks like we have some findings of facts when the board's ready. I think we have a few. I have GH, N, and T. Or we can touch base on any other items that the board feels is unresolved.
Mr. Chair, I'd be in favor if staff could put the draft findings up and we could edit them like we did in the previous application and then maybe take action on it once we're So I guess Jim usually leads us off, but I try my best. Given G, landscape and buffering, I believe was the first one that we needed to modify, I think we should strike that the board should make a finding on the standard. With the plans that were submitted and the review from our landscape architect, with the oral commitment from the applicant this evening, that they would add additional small plantings around the buffer, around the condensing units on the west side.
Mr. Chair, regarding H, I would suggest we eliminate the sentence there and insert, based upon the applicant's plans and representations, this proposed development will not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of abutting properties. So the standard is met.
Any other thoughts from board members on that item?
The next one is N?
Yeah.
Jim already has it written down.
No, I don't, but I would suggest we eliminate the last sentence. And indicate that, based upon the applicant's plans and testimony, and in cooperation with city staff, has demonstrated that the standard is met. Mr. Chair, I think the last standard was T, the audiovisual buffer. We've spent a fair amount of time talking about that tonight. I would suggest we eliminate that sentence and simply state that, based upon the application and plans and commitment of the applicant to additional small plantings around the condensing units on the westerly and southerly sides of the property, this standard is met.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members on any of the findings of fact?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt the amended findings of facts.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second, Carolyn. Any additional discussion?
Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Now vote yes as well, motion passes five zero.
Mr. Chair, I didn't see any issues with the conditions of approval, I don't know if anyone else did. But to move this along, I'll move that we adopt the conditions of approval.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant site plan approval for the Eastview Parkway map 64, lot 626.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Carolyn. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Now vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. All right, board members, we have a few remaining items on our agenda here. I believe we can get through them this evening. If we could, given the hour, get a motion to continue after our nine o'clock deadline here, if the board members are up for the task, and continue with these few remaining items.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue past our nine o'clock cutoff to address the two remaining items on our agenda with a hard stop at 10 o'clock.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second, Joyce. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. So with that, we have our next item on our agenda this evening, this is item 8E. No, are we on eight still? We are, sorry. 8E, this is 138 Main Street, map 37, lot 8, and this is a proposal to install electric bus charges in utilities, and the applicant is the Bedford-Saco Alachia Beach Transportation Center. This item has just recently been requested to be tabled to the May 20th meeting. Is that correct, my understanding, Emily?
Yes, that's correct.
So with that-
With that, Mr. Chair, I move to table our agenda item 8E as in Edward for 138 Main Street to our May 20th meeting.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff. Thank you for the second, Jim. Any additional discussion to table this item to May 20th? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. With that, our next item on the agenda this evening is item 8F. This is 439 Main Street, map 33, lot 25-1. And this is a proposal to convert existing commercial units to seven affordable housing dwelling units, and this is presented by Jackson Brown and BH2M. And this is a application of completeness review this evening for site plan amendment. This project is within the medium-density residential zoning district, and the request is to convert existing commercial space into seven affordable housing residential dwelling condo units. Board members, any disclosures or conflicts on this item? And Emily, anything to add?
Just like to point out a few things here, this is the second proposal that we will be reviewing under section 230-703. The first one, I believe, was 12 School Street that you did back in January. This is using the affordable housing density bonus that became effective in the state as of, well, for us, it was on the books in October 2023. And as part of this, we will be asking you to look at section 230-703 and make your review and findings based on that section. And also, we'll be asking how long-term monitoring will be completed to ensure the units remain affordable into the next 30 years. These are similar questions that we had for the 12 School Street proposal, and they addressed them through the Maine State Housing Authority grant funding that they were going for. So those are the two kind of questions that will be coming up from staff and we'll be recommending that the board thoroughly vet. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Do board members have any questions for Emily at this time? All right, and with that, we have the applicant with us this evening. Thank you for staying with us.
Thank you for staying. Hello, everybody, my name is Austin Fagan, here with BH2M, representing Jackson Brown. Once again, thanks for staying past the scheduled time, appreciate you hanging in there with us. You saw this project, let's see, back quite a few months ago, January 21st, for sketch plan review, where we discussed the property. This is an existing commercial property with seven commercial condo units, looking to convert those commercial units into residential units. Since then, have had a neighborhood meeting on March 13th where no neighbors attended, did have some discussions with the assistant planning staff, and, you know, everybody seemed to look forward to having some more affordable housing close within the town proximity or the city proximity. Based on sketch plan review, we have provided dumpster location, turning movements for the trash truck, and recently for a fire truck based on city engineer comments. And we have looked into a comment that was brought up during the- And we have looked into a comment that was brought up during the initial review on which units will be marked as affordable. For ease of bookkeeping, and as Emily said, keeping track of this being a certain amount of affordable units, in this case, four. And based on some interaction between the applicant and faculty with a local school, it was expressed that there is a need for more or less units for single or one-income households. So the intent is to use all of the one-bedroom units as affordable units. This will make it so that there are some one-bedroom units in the direct proximity of the school for people with, you know, single or limited incomes to have a place to live in Saco. Pretty straightforward, I think, tonight, just going for completeness, but be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Jim?
One of the questions I had was the truck turning radius. I guess it was on page twenty-seven of forty-three. It shows the truck turning configuration. One thing I was wondering about is it looks like that in order for this to work, the trucks would have to actually go on to the four forty-five Main Street lot, it appears, to be able to complete their turns.
I believe, so with the backing out, the majority of that property is actually owned by the applicant, so I guess the exit side of the property. And there is an easement over that for access from the adjacent property. If I can manage to find my way through here and get to that turning schematic, might be a little more helpful for you. Let's see.
I don't know if you have all the same pages we do, but hopefully.
I hope so.
I should, it's just flipping through. I have, we made one submission on April ninth, one on the eighteenth, and one on May second, so.
It looks like it's part of the original application, I'm not sure.
Thank you for that.
April ninth, it looks like is the day.
That's page twenty-seven of forty-three in ours.
And I've omitted it from my own pack, so that's a good thing. That being said, Emily, is there any ability to pull that up? Is there a... Thank you. Thanks for bearing with me.
Not a problem.
So we, well, Emily's finding that and putting it up on the screen. So are you telling us that the, that there's an easement for vehicles to travel on the adjacent lot that's listed as four forty-five Main Street LLC, which I guess is a real estate office or something?
Yeah, so if you look at the site plan itself, there is an area shown as snow storage. I guess to the left-hand side of that, you can see that there's an L shape in the property.
Yes.
So without looking directly at that, if we do back onto that property, I could update the turning template in order to show it getting around that. Or we may be able to work with the adjacent property for an easement for turning, if that's required.
Well, yeah, that's all I was concerned about. Because if it looks like you were going to use the neighboring property as a place to turn...
Ah, yes.
Then you, I would think you might need permission from them to do that. Or if you decide to use that little bump-out section at the bottom, now it's up on the screen. If you decide to use that little bump-out area on the bottom to be able to back your vehicles in, it seems like that could work well, too. But I just wasn't sure what your overall plan was there. So just to be aware, I mean, it's not an application of completeness issue, but just to sort of suggest that you may need to look at that.
That's a great catch, thank you. And so something we could take into consideration if, you know, if an easement's not feasible, we could get rid of some of the lower parking spaces, since we do have such a surplus of it. That's definitely something that we'll look forward to expanding upon for you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members? Jeff?
Well, I, too, I thought I was proud of myself. I caught something Jim would normally see with that easement. But my question would be is that with the second part of my concern with that is that's a fairly long maneuver in a reverse position for a truck. And so if that easement didn't already exist, I didn't know if there was a way maybe you could work together with the other property to maybe make like a common dumpster area where you could minimize some of the backing movement. I didn't know if that would maybe be a joint effort between the two. But either way, I mean, I'd prefer that the truck didn't have to back up that far in the interior part of the lot. Always get a little nervous with kids. Or we need to have easement for that. Those were the two items that I had. I think we had really gone pretty thorough on the sketch review, and you'd captured a lot of that in this application, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts from board members?
Mr. Chair, to just put a motion on the floor, it looks to me like the application is complete. I mean, there may be small things that need to be done later to fine-tune it, but it's otherwise, I think, meets our standards for a complete application. So I'll move that we determine the application complete.
I will second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero to find the application complete.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we schedule a public hearing for June third.
Thank you for the motion, Jim.
I will second that motion.
Second by Jeff, thank you. June third, that was? Great, thank you. Any additional discussion to schedule a public hearing for June third on this item? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you June third.
Sounds like a plan. Thanks for your time, thanks for staying late.
All right, continuing along this evening, our next item is eight G. This is eight hundred Portland Road. This is map fifty-nine lot one. And this is a proposal for forty-nine residential condominium units with three thousand square feet of commercial building space. And this, Emily, as I understand, has been requested to continue to our next meeting.
Yes, for eight hundred Portland Road, they actually asked to be moved to the next meeting to make sure that we as staff had more time to review their materials because they weren't going to meet the submission date that we asked them to meet.
All right, great, and that's May twentieth. Great, thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I would move that we continue the review of the eight hundred Portland Road proposal to May twentieth, twenty twenty-five Planning Board meeting.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff.
Second.
Second by Jim, thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion to continue this item to May twentieth? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. Our next item on the agenda this evening is one ninety-seven Jenkins Road. This is item eight H. This is map ninety-one lot seven, and this is a proposed private road. And this is for Five Star Holdings. And the application, or the applicant, excuse me, has requested that this be tabled or continue review to another date. Is that how I understand it, Emily?
Well, I think the applicant told us that they want to put this on hold, which we, we do receive these requests once in a while, and I'll have to come back to the board, and we'll probably have to make an ordinance adjustment that after a certain number of days where an application is on hold, it just, something has to happen. Either it comes back to the board and gets withdrawn, or there's got to be some mechanism. Because I have about three or four of these applications now that are just on hold. So they've asked for this to be put on hold. So I'm not sure if they're going to be, I think it should be tabled indefinitely at this point, but I know there were some follow-up items from public comment.
Okay, thank you, Emily. So with that, a few of those items, if I recall correctly, with the public comment and some of the discussion that had to date, there were a few items really sort of left unresolved. I know there was the septic systems that came into question. There were some items to be resolved there. But there seems like there's a few items left over as part of that submission that should hopefully worked with and coordinated with staff on some sort of, what's the right word, not fix. But there's some outstanding items that I think should come to a resolution, I think, for some of the residents out there, and the road and the properties out there as well. Is that something that we can talk about or ask staff to look into?
Yeah, at this point, I think you should probably just direct staff to look into it because I would be hesitant about talking too much about the application without the applicant here.
Okay, that's fair. So staff's continued direction would be to work with the applicant on the outstanding items as part of this application. Because the application is still, it's still applicable, it hasn't been withdrawn. So that all still applies. So, okay. Does that make sense to the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, since there's a, I think this is part of a continued public hearing, too, right? So would it make sense that we continue it to some date certain? Even if the prospect could be it would be tabled again, just so that the public would have some idea as to when a possible next public hearing would take place?
I think we'll have to renotice for this one because usually when someone puts it on hold, there, it's a while before we get anything.
So just, so you would prefer just generally continue it?
Generally, and then we will know we have to renotice it when it comes back.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little uncomfortable because Emily's usually very stern, and she likes to have a date for this one. But I will go with their drafted motion. So I will move to continue review of the one ninety-seven Jenkins Road, Five Star Holdings proposal to a later date.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second, Jim. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes five zero. All right, with that, our next item, general correspondences. Anything above and beyond our packet from this afternoon?
No.
All right, great, thank you. And moving along, any planning department updates or discussion items?
Yeah, we had a really good housing action plan listening session. A bunch of us attended. When I say a bunch of us, staff from other departments came out to work on it as well. We had twenty to twenty-five people there. We broke out into groups and are putting together comments and questions and feedback based on questions that were asked of the group. So it was a pretty good first public listening session. We'll have one tomorrow night here at City Hall. This one will be downtown area focused. And then the last one will be on June fourth, also here at City Hall in the evening, and that one will be citywide focused. So we took some focus areas for this. We'll also be following up with, we had a business breakfast back March twenty-six specific for Portland Road property owners, and we'll be hosting another business breakfast toward the end of May to further that conversation and talk about Portland Road. And we'll also have a main DOT representative invited to that one. And then we had a good long-range planning committee meeting following up on some of the ordinance amendments, the housing action plan, the Portland Road master plan. And once the contract zoning project is complete, I'll be bringing forward the suite of ordinance, the package of ordinance amendments that we had started talking about a few months ago and that we brought forward to City Council at Land Use Workshops.
Great, thank you. So there's room at the table for anyone that wants to attend the housing action plan discussion tomorrow night. Yeah, I was at the first one, and as Emily mentioned, it was good. There's a lot of good discussion. I won't be able to make tomorrow's discussion, but all are welcome, so.
It's good, somehow I had it in my mind that it was a conflict with this, so.
Now it's not, so you can go.
It's great.
All right, any planning board comments? Thoughts from board members? Great. Well, thank you, everyone, for staying a few minutes late this evening. It's greatly appreciated. And with that, we will adjourn at nine twenty-five PM. Thank you, everyone.